I'm going to call the meeting to order. You don't have a chair right now. It is. It is six oh five. And our first order of business, I don't know, I don't have it on here. If you want to.
Sure. The United States of America and to a public with a stance, one nation under God. Justice.
Thank you. So my first item, like a chairperson, the chairperson would be the one who just handled the meeting. And, you know, move it along, make sure that people are comfortable, whatever you're saying. It's not. No, it's not a big deal here. This is a simple group. We know our miller. Ben thought Trump's belonging was not. So if somebody who would like to be kept.
I wanted to nominate Charlie. I figured he's the old new guy, so why not? He's been around enough unless you have any objections. I certainly don't need anything else unlikely. But I think none of us do for that. That would be nice to.
Try to step forward or real step back.
Yeah, that's crazy. The way.
All right, so nomination for Charlie to be the chair. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any nominations? Nominations are up close, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye. Please.
All right.
Thank you, Charlie.
Our next slide will be discussion of possible actions. I'm going to need the count.
So what I did was, I went through and I tried to find out what all the different committees were and what they were doing. And some of these I have aligned through them. And those are the ones that I think that we can, if you agree with me, we can have council vote on to abolish. They can always be brought back. Right, it's just they won't be considered one of the, you know, standing committees. So this was services commission or committee. Was involved in a lot of the buildings that were going on. There was ten, twelve, twelve house plans. It's a perk, you know, things along those lines. Your last meeting was two thousand.
The only thing that I was thinking about with this one is that I know we've got, we're going to have the, we've been talking about the truck wash being built. You know, you know, and then we, you know, we had the discussion Charlie about building things in that split. To whatever something that we could do with, I don't know if that's worth.
Well, it's worth having a committee.
The thing is, the public building commission brings us pretty much a package in the whole council votes. But we really don't set the standard for whatever we're going to build. If there's some special thing like down the road, if there's a need for council or for a committee about senior center. But right now, I feel.
Yeah. Basically, I was like, I appreciate what you're saying.
What you're saying, because we've been talking about it, but I think we're almost to the point.
We definitely have a public, if we didn't have a public building commission.
Right. Yeah.
All right, the next item has to do with the committee to oversee the lot of votes to send to town. I did speak to Tim Simon about this. He would like a small committee to talk to, just so you know how KAL is going and what's going on with the fire department and everything.
Just might just know that is.
Yeah, well, I remember a while that we talked about.
It's an important thing because they have a problem being involved here.
Right.
You get a stipend for a certain number of calls. It's very small, but some. All right, so we'll keep that one.
Yep.
Now, the next one that's to do with the community content to municipality, TCM. And usually the mayor does vote to these meetings. And he, it's a good networking for him. So he's involved in two other mayors or come in. It's a, it's a good network.
It is. They offer some special programs.
They're watching.
Yes.
Yeah. So I hope the committee could help this. I did talk to, is it Vanessa on this? I, I'm sure you all know her. And she. And she said, with the representatives that they have, it's really covered. You don't usually need the council to, because the council will always, you know, they always have their yearly report. They always come when they need something, you know, things along those lines. So it seems to be like. The technology committee, I had first thought that maybe they should have this. But in talking to Brian Treven, who's our IT department, he feels that it's not necessary at this time. He's been moving forward with changing over a lot of our servers, working on our Wi-Fi. You know, the Wi-Fi that he changed that whole bit. He's counting us all on the different email. So the email has changed. So he's on top of a lot of this and says, willing his forte is what he likes to do all that.
I like these better.
I think that I was going to say that. It'd be nice to have. Do like a, what's going on. And we also.
Joint meeting the other night, what I see was, everybody had so many buried backgrounds. We had what fifteen, twenty people there and everybody brought something different to the table. You know, phenomenal amount of talent, like the technology meeting with George Millard was the head of IT for Ever. Right. Used his talent to advise town, even though it was under work. We could interact both.
Yeah.
Some of those guys in Florida finance, huge budgets and corporations and phenomenal talent.
I thought that was one of the best.
It seemed like everybody was on the same page, which was nice, you know?
But so many different perspectives.
Absolutely. But like, we're both just single. It's very good.
I can definitely talk to Oroch about having Brian come to maybe even like a very, maybe even a February. They should talk about what he's doing in this budget, so that you guys are aware of it.
A little update.
Yeah.
We understand that.
Yes.
So they weren't, we need twenty computers, okay, to tell them about it. I have no idea. I depend on his likes.
Yeah. You know, and a huge deal of IT with ESPN.
Decent amount. The one thing I had a question for, because I just experienced the Zoom last week too. Is there a way that we can get the microphones to go directly to the Zoom feed themselves? Because right now, what it sounds like is the computer that the Zoom is up to is just taking in all the ambient sound. And it's like speakers and that kind of stuff. So it's hard to, it depends on who's talking. Like when, if you've got somebody that's got a loud voice to cut through, it's easy here. But if you have somebody who doesn't, and sometimes, and so we have like people that tend to trail off at the end of your sentences, don't miss words. And you kind of get the, the idea of what we're talking about, but there's.
And that's what we, so that was done at senior center. But I think Brian has a concern about that because. It wouldn't mean some upgrades there. How often are they seen?
Well, I was talking even about the one that we had in the chambers the last time.
Which is hard.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's some kind of a, maybe it's hooked up somewhere, but the feed didn't miss it.
Okay, so is it worse than it was or is this kind of how it's been?
I don't know. I mean, I was, for me, weren't hearing a speaking to the mics.
Yeah.
The main, the main computer.
Basically, just hearing the sound of speakers or whatever.
Maybe we're not holding a microphone.
Well, I don't know. Maybe there's, there's a microphone selector in the computer that maybe it's connected. That way we just have to select the source.
So there is a mic, there is a plug that comes from the. The box in the front.
Right.
Speakers, and that goes right into them, like say my computer.
So I think, I think what it is. Yeah.
You would think, especially with things being the way they are and having to do remote, and we're going to have to do this.
Yeah.
Clearly, we should be able to get our systems to remote us where we are, you know, whether it's senior sector here upstairs. Where people could hear what we're saying, because there's nothing worse than the wrong, to get on the other side and everyone's talking and you don't hear. Dealing, it's horrible.
There was a lot of loss.
You know.
It was kind of hard to chime in.
Maybe then our IT guys should come in and work to the council and the council.
Yeah, how can we fix this? How can we make it still?
The whole council should be dying.
All right, I'll definitely accept.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, because we need to, we need to make things better.
But if we don't, oh.
It is enough, you know? It's just, it's just not the best. I'm on lots of Zoom meetings with the state from different agencies and we never have a problem. And you can always hear people. So I just don't know. Yeah, right.
Now, the only thing is. I don't know if some of it is set up. Like when I do Zoom meetings, I just, we just do a Zoom meeting here without all this.
Right.
Then I, I don't have a problem with any of them. I'm wholly with one.
So maybe it's just whatever you're hoping into.
Yeah.
And we're not the only town that has these issues, but I do think that we need to work at it.
Lisa takes minutes, remember, meetings.
Yeah.
And sometimes we have trouble getting the system to work. Would it be practical, trying to find a, for hours, part time guide? Help us. You know, like in high school, you had the audio visual guide.
That's right.
I mean, that may be something to consider.
That's true.
Because there's so many after hours and so many, you know, in person and Zoom that maybe we can find somebody that can help us out, you know?
It's exactly what Oroch wants to do for the, for the board of that. Because he's very concerned about that one.
Well, you could do it for a, I think.
Yeah.
See, the board of that has money and the.
Bring it in. Ring of it.
Can I say that?
I mean, we should share it, you know, part time, right? Even like these meetings, if you came in for the first forty five minutes and got it working, you would have to stay for the whole meeting.
Right. Just to make sure.
You can't come every night, you know, and the tech guy can't come every night. No, you're many nights. We have a person that just did the evening.
I think it's great. I like that. I find it, and they're on that page.
Yes.
Sorry. All right, I will definitely thank you, and I'll send you an email as far as the comments. That way you know.
We had a zoning meeting or what, when some developer couldn't zoom in. You should like to get sued. Or you could overturn our vote or whatever.
All right. The next one is the planning committee. I have to kind of settle on this one. She doesn't think it's necessary at this time, since we're not looking at field or anything.
So we've got, well, we have some products that are works in the personal field that they're redoing. Then are they done, they're not done the high school, right? The little.
I don't know.
Track this. It's that much.
Yeah. We had, the last meeting we had on the playing fields was, I want to say last before COVID or right. I mean, it's been ages since we did that, but I think that you're right. I think that that is still happening, but I think everything's in place to move forward.
One of the things we did discuss, I didn't, if I remember correctly, the last meeting was looking to make sure that we were at least maintaining what we have. And then to also identify other issues if there were any for other fields that were in town. You know, the baseball stadium, if that stuff or some of the fields that saves like the auxiliary field.
And the lights.
Not even so slightly, but the field itself. Yeah, we'd always reason the lights, I think that's why. But, but as far as just making sure that we're staying ahead of that, so I don't know. Maybe we need to.
Peter knowledge in that field.
It is, well, he knows all about it. Spent a lot of time there. I've been spending a lot of time with it too lately, but he knows the history.
Yeah. He knows the history and.
Yeah.
You want to keep the community going?
I think, I think it'd be, it'd be okay to keep it. And then what we need to do is maybe get some agenda, see if we can get another meeting going this spring. I just feel like, hey, you know, one term.
So then, the next one is paid development committee. And this kind of, I think, carry over probably ten years. As you know, they have a conversation every ten years. And previously. Even though paying for it, handle that, they have other boards and commissions weigh in on it. This year, they've decided this will be in safe. But when they do the implementation committee, at that point, they will ask for council, you know, and other boards and commissions to come in to be in. So it is only every ten years. And then this year, Indy does handle it. They decided to keep it all, you know, on, just have a year committee, so that they will follow on. Oh, like I said, when they do the implementation committee, which will be. And the next one needs to be formed later, just maybe meet after, in conservation, complete the work. And it'll have several different members there.
So development basically just deals, I know that deals with everything, planning, zoning, conservation areas.
Yes.
This year, they're including the portable housing.
Yeah.
So once, when everybody's done.
And I'm. So, oh, that's fun.
Seems like this is a good one.
Yeah. You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, now, the, an implementation committee. I'll talk to the council about it, but they don't have to form a committee. They're not going to form a committee themselves. They're going to have members that go on it when a can of conservation is stopped. Okay. And it's not one of our committees right now, but you know where. The fires community committee, again, Tim Simon would like us to continue. Now, I don't know if maybe we can vote it into Robert Luft also and have one committee that Robert Luft. And the fires to team the committee, but what he, what, what Jim is looking at is number one, he wants to have a couple council members there. So that fire department can see that table. Because you really don't hear from them and stuff like that. You know, and they then kind of separated out on their own.
I think we should combine up.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I was talking to a retired chief from the Brittany other day. Effective update equipment, up as a trap volunteer.
Sure.
Do we really have to replace these trucks? You can run them longer. But my update.
Makes sense.
Yeah, nobody likes to drive around in.
You want the pencils.
Yeah.
Well, there's a different perspective. I hadn't thought of this type of requirement for thirty years. They're reestablishing.
I'm sorry. They are reestablishing like a club at the high school to try to attract younger members.
We use, of course.
Yeah.
And here, well, the trade force.
The redo, their, the re-institute.
I mean, because one of my, one of my suspects. Because I'm very upset that they, that was a great source.
Yeah.
I think there was even an explorer.
There was at one time, years, years ago, explorers, the, the young kids with the fire.
Cultivated volunteers.
You know, even, you know, the, the techy kids that were involved with the heating and plumbing and all of those, you know, type of businesses, industries that you work at. We don't, you know.
Everybody.
Not everybody.
Yeah, I was going to say.
No. And that's what works with it. Trying to find a good plumber.
Yeah.
And you wonder why the kids are on the. And everybody. I'm just want to work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely. And I do think that anything that can be done helps with the volunteers. The benefit, we still have our. And all the more. Right now, for me. They're really being kind of pushed out in a lot of communities.
Sure.
They can't get that. And then the page people don't want to deal with. But this is great.
The firehouse, um, it's great. I've got it for a year.
So what, what should we do for?
Where are you down by something? Yeah.
There was a schoolhouse and then things still are more.
Yeah.
I'd really like to get them in for, you think that the town wants.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. And that's a good point.
That's something we could bring up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Should we, that you guys want to support them and what can you do and let's take them late. Get things noticed.
Because they do a lot, not just for fire. So their quality come out. All right.
My husband, those were the first guys that were there.
All right. We're going to be doing the, the. Comes down September. Excellent. Are we the hall?
We used to have dances and stuff after the day.
Pardon?
Did we have dances at firehouse back in the day? Yeah, we, there were parties and dinners and we used to do.
But they do the Pearl and Fair Firework. But nothing.
Yeah.
You would pay that house thirty grand.
Oh, I know. I know. And we need to, I think, if we get back to that group if we can somehow, someday.
And they do a huge. All that money goes into the, the part of the, that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's huge. They've been giving, some of these things have been so much, and the advocates have given nothing to prove about it. It's been something that they, you know, use.
Right.
Which has been great. So the next one is community conversation. And this was, I thought, very interesting. This is really intriguing. It, it's to, it was supposed to be where it's set up between council and board of that. And that they talk about all the different issues that are facing the students or the schools or whatever. And this is a nationwide program that is done, I thought it was even more amazing. But it's done nationwide and I don't know how. Resilient business now, or how many communities do it? But it was. Is to address the needs of students, educators and public ministry, or public education. So. It may be something to have a conversation about where you have a point of, you know, council members who can sit down with the board of that. But, or you think it might be a little bit too much. I don't know what I mean.
You sort of look at it, and I know that there's some little issues right now in terms of education. It's falling behind on some of the academic achievement, you know? I know that there's some social issues. I'm hoping that, you know, like you mentioned the other night, the state will maybe come up with some more funding for education. I, I'm hoping, praying that they do, because there's a lot of these kids in big trouble.
Oh, yeah.
Big trouble.
With all the test scores. They, they plummeted because of the.
And, and so, you know, I think that we're on top of this now. I don't know if we, you know, want to wrap this around it. I don't know.
It's always been a disparity, don't be on a council, or on its contract negotiations. I always ask anything, like, the vice principal from the school department makes twenty five thousand dollars more than the police chief. You know, and you come in and say, well, the teachers work all the time if you get a bonus. Well, the guy driving the auto. You know what I mean? There's always been this. Their unstep up. We should talk about it. Probably not.
I think because we're all in tune to the need right now, maybe we.
Well, it sounds like the, the plans would be, the state level is probably best to keep it around when things start getting.
I would say we don't necessarily have to meet with this, but let, maybe don't, just keep it on the books. Yeah. But knowing that we're working around this and I, like I said, I'm hoping and praying that, you know, the state's going to come up some. So we don't necessarily.
Put that one on hold collectively better.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's what I would just say.
Maybe you have the whole bounty.
Yeah. Yeah. Because we are trying to address some of these issues. They're real and they do need to be addressed, you know? Kids are in trouble big time. Times and schools. And.
My kid, my grandchildren were from Massachusetts. They were never shut down at all.
I mean, and I'm not saying that's the thing to do, because clearly it has effects on its kids. There are those effects. Not, and the, the parents and the teachers and the nurses, my kids are on call every weekend as school nurses. They take time, you know, turns, you know, from the high school. It's crazy, crazy, crazy what's going on.
On the negotiation.
All right, so let's, let's hope we'll owe that for now.
Okay.
I, I could suggest that.
Yeah.
Oh, I can put it on the agenda for that comment.
Yeah.
So some of these I'm going to say to abolish. And some of them.
Let's just.
And also the B O E.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Right now, I think they're like innovative, scrambling just to keep things.
Yeah.
Okay. Management evaluation, so this is they are. And this is simply, it used to be where one comes to try to gather all the information. We don't have a rent of seven dollars.
Yeah, but what we've been doing the last few years, the personnel director.
And I think that's bad, and that's fine too. All right, so now it's all.
We have a person. I was about to say, like, really good with that, we're going to have a big turpers.
I don't know. A meeting house, so this. Was kind of rare. They, they did kind of stay with the, they were going to like the. Berlin Historic Society, meeting some things on our voting sign. But because the meeting house is really, the, the county really wanted them to form their own fundraising committee and do things like that. I don't know if we're going to need it, but it's up to you at ours, if you want to have somebody to.
Well, I, I, I've been a member of the historic society, of this church. I wouldn't say that in front of them, they'd stab me. But I've been involved with them for almost thirty years, I mean, as long as I've been in town. And they have good hearts and they really, you know, without people like this. We would not have the knowledge that we have about our community that we have. Okay, I think they're very, very important. And, and I think the meeting house is important. I think they do a lot of fundraising and they've raised a lot of money. And the, you know, state has afforded them some, you know, grant monies, which is wonderful. So, especially since there's been a push, and it was even mentioned on the meeting when I was at this morning with the other legislators. I think we should, and there's a lot of drive for humanities, the humanities council right now in Hartford and arts and culture and tourism. So I would leave this alive, okay? I just think. I just think that it's, it's a group of people that we shouldn't listen to. And I think, and I'm passionate about it too, obviously. You know, there's this.
I agree, it was a tragedy. Tragedy. That was iconic piece. And for twenty years, I said, we should do something.
Devastated.
Anyway, no, 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 no. And then, when you're finally ready to give it to us.
You know, I mean, they have, you know, the other houses behind the house now. They've done a lot with that. I mean, and I'm, you know, what is it? I'm dear friends with quite a few of them. And I think it's important that we can continue to support them. I'd be grateful to jump into that.
So with the donations they're receiving, are they waiting until they get a specific amount?
I think they have to get a certain amount. I mean, they've done, like, they bought them twelve something house. The house is right behind there. And I know that they have put some money and they've got some funding and grants, but I, I think some of it might be matched. And there's a lot of work that has to be done.
They needed a special amount of money, just to get fourteen drones. Five people. For an architect.
So, and Lorraine is very passionate. She does a fantastic job. So I think that, you know, if there's any way to, you know, I think we should keep that. I think it's important. Even if you meet once a year, you know, once, twice a year, it's better than, you know.
It's important.
Just to know that we are concerned. I mean, this is part of Berlin's history. It's very important. We're involved with that.
I mean, there's a lot of historical places around town. The more that we can save, the better.
Right. Right, right.
And it's, I mean, especially when we take the kids around in the summer. We visit certain places. We'll go to small towns. We always look for, which are history. What's going in there? It'd be nice to have a little.
And we are, we are because of our ancestors in this community.
So to have that around.
I think it's very important. I think we should definitely put our finger on that pulse because, like I said, there's a huge surge for. There's more money being dumped into culture and tourism industry here in Connecticut right now. And I've been involved with museums, working for museums for seventeen years now, do you know what I'm saying? So I think there's maybe some potential out there, but you know, it's gonna happen.
That's one of the United Act of Law. I can't find the government.
Okay, that's weird. I, my name came up on that thing and I had never heard of. Recently, I've been pushing. I'm an engineer. For all land. Federal money for highway repairs. It's a big push politically. With the environmental changes, we're worried about super storms and all of that. Well, our town yard and that, or we're having a farming and having a much flood because of Route Nine Bridge is not picking. And I would like to see the river dredge or fix that bridge. Where the men advance the watershed, I think. So, kind of like the push there.
Yeah.
The political and the economic. Start of May line for that.
Alright. Plus for us.
No, absolutely. By all the old guys. The guys, the guys that are even older than I am. Said they didn't want that. Dennis Ferns thinks that over the years, the development had a problem because of water runs up. But also a lot of degrees. He says nothing else. He wanted to create a channel. Makes sense.
Okay. Now we're on the calendar. Now, they have had it where Biden.
You do it to show it to friends.
Yeah.
I think that works.
I said, Biden, Biden looked at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But if, it was there, it was made of wood completely. But I don't know if you wanna make it a council member as it has been or if you wanna bring it back.
At least I'm fine. You work with them and makes us happy as we all say day or day and. Or unless somebody else has to.
Until he leaves, then he starts revisiting.
Yeah.
As long as I'm here, you're okay.
Right, exactly.
Alright, and the next one is with the. So this was a fireman incentive committee. And this was the one that was designed to recruit and retain the.
That's kind of redone though.
Yeah. Yeah, and hasn't really been done. It started in nineteen ninety-five, but there hasn't been much since then. But I think with the other things, we have it covered.
Okay.
If we don't start paying more attention to the fire department. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Alright. Do you want to tie it into the goals and procedures or?
Not down here yet.
Okay, so. It's, I may, uh, rules and procedures. General. Under chapters, they have the. Um, chapter shift, the budget process, that changed to chapter seven with a charter revision. Alright. I think you can still keep it maybe in here because you do get involved with the budget access for the findings that's done there. And then the section of the code of ethics is really nice dashboard and it changed also with the charter revision. And the, according to the charter, in the absence of the mayor or deputy mayor, the council will left of. I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest you put in temporary chair person. Alright, because it would only be that one meeting.
Otherwise, you have to put them off next meeting.
Yeah. And if that's what charter says, is a temporary term. Right. And then for D, I would suggest that if then the mayor will be a voter member of the council. Which is in the charter.
But that's on. D isn't there because of C, right? Isn't, is that not it? This is basically just another.
This is separate.
Okay.
So separate is, so the mayor is a voting member of the council. It's in the charter, but. Carry over from. And then this would be a more, what I do, and that is under regular meetings under C. Which says the deadlines for regular items. We pulled that out to eleven AM on the Tuesday. One required.
So not the Friday, the Friday deadline?
Is to get, yeah, I just made.
So then you were adding something that.
So what happens now is, uh, yes, so on B, where it says the deadline for regular items.
Oh, I get it. Eleven.
Yeah, on a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
One required to. In a product that you know, Tuesday, I don't remember. And then, um. That's the rest of it. And then on the next page, where it says order in the agenda. We don't follow a lot of this, so my suggestion is to get it where it's. Such a reasons for all presentation, audiences, and they have public ministry, public participation here. Old business, new business, I would do away with. And then just like folks consent, new business. Appointment, county report, special committee report.
So let's go through this event. So the project allegiance, work, work for presentations.
Yes.
Okay, public participation.
So that should be taken out and to the audience.
Citizens.
Audience.
And then you're basically flipping, flipping consent or consent goes at the top. Then old and new.
Yeah, we don't even do.
We don't do old.
We don't do old business. So I would say after audience decision. Uh, my suggestion is consent. And then the new business. And then appointments. And then go into county report for special committee report. Council's communication. I would then begin there second minute.
I want to add is that, um, the mayor wants to do his mayor's report, so I think that needs to be incorporated here.
Do you want it to be added permanently?
Yes.
And then. So.
Where, where's.
I'll put it in there.
Thank you.
Alright.
We'll go with the new.
Yeah.
Mail.
Yes, yes.
So this may not go on the agenda for the eighteen, but it will go on for like February.
We're basically doing it.
We're doing it the most the way we sense we are, so.
Yeah. But I can do, um, if you go along with, or if there's something that you don't go along with. And I will do that and also I'll send it to. I think with the subcommittee, if you're agreeable, you can put that on the eighteen.
Yeah.
Alright, and then we can have this very, we'll then kind of look at it. Alright, um, in the special meetings, the only thing I'm gonna ask is that, um. Where it says such written notice of the hand delivery to the council member, but that's the prior to that meeting. It could incorporate a little bit, but. And they don't have to do it if they want. Are you?
Anyway, you could say electronic notification. Not everybody reads your email. You may have noticed that. But I have no problem with.
Okay, the problem is that.
I'm the text. I'm making you crazy and I know it's hard work for you. But I just pour emails. Okay, every day that I need to try. So like if something comes in in between and I miss it. You know, I like to be a little present agenda, okay?
What are we talking about? Special meetings?
Especially, but even so, special means special meeting. If somehow you miss it, unless you call it, I'll see it tonight, it's possible that you can miss it, you know?
It, it's always possible. And I think even if it's about a council meeting. Or somebody says to you in the hallway, I'll see you next week.
Yeah.
You can still forget about it.
Sure, sure.
There's so many things that go on.
That are happening, yeah.
I, I do think for the most part, um. Especially how I've seen whole sides of the I O work is that you guys kind of keep an eye on each other and make sure that you know your own. The, I, I don't mind. I mean, like I said, I can deliver them. But it, it's still that type of.
Well, maybe because it's just special, okay? Is there any way that can we, can we text because it's special? Can you text from your office for special meetings? Is there any way, well, that you have to confirm or RSVP, just like CBS calls. You want your meds pulled.
Well, if you wanted to text all of us once, that is a lot.
And she is on my phone. I don't.
Oh, you don't. Why don't you have a time phone?
Um, we can have, um, but I think she kind of.
What about a roach? Can a roach, but can she use a roach's? Cause she sometimes texts us. If it's a special or if it's an accident or something. I mean, I don't know. I just, I'm old school.
I trust you. I don't wanna make more work here. And I'm spoiled.
But see, that's the issue too, is technically. Yes, I do just think so, your, your stuff, but. If you don't waive it, that doesn't, it doesn't help because then if Lisa doesn't give it to you, she forgets to give it to you or something. Technically, I'm in violation of the statute.
So is it, is it the end of the world with the PD like they used to drop off our counties? Well, there's.
We never wanted those to live.
There's always.
Yeah, there's always a time in my house. So I mean. Is, you know, for them to drop is, I mean, they're cruising around anyways. I mean. I know you a lot, but Lisa could be yours.
They sent Lisa out at her rate of pay to deliver wetlands.
So when I first started, I used to do that. And they would have the agenda ready. Maybe at twelve o'clock, thirty on a Friday. But then I would spend the next hour and a half driving around. You know, I don't really care about hours and everything, but it is nine on Friday. But it was what happened. And then what happened was Linda Simmadon's house got hit by a tractor trailer. They were working over, she was in a hole. And they were doing a house, they were building a house and the tractor trailer raced to me and it hit a. It, it put the foundation, the house right on the foundation. Also, she was the police chief. And I was trying to get the case to happen. And no, 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 I don't want to. And that, he was, he was furious when he came in on Monday. Cause the police that had responded didn't know she was a, a council. Now, now that that makes a difference, still in our, you know, it's like someone, you should, you guys should know who you count on. They vote on your budget. Now, especially at that time, your budget. And, um, so he had it where he did the first step. And then he had different officers do it after that. So that's where that came.
But see, that's staying out like with the shootings that coming.
Exactly.
Oh, listen, I don't want to drop you after, but.
So, and this is the other thing, this is why we're trying to go with the trying. And so that Lisa's not out there delivering the package. And or somebody else was. Um, Rich went home. Oh, I thought it was, you know, wonderful. He's had a same thing like a lot. And I'm not afraid of dogs. But the dog started to enjoy it with very, very obsessive of Rich. And when I went up and took, he put his, he put his mouth over my wrist. The dog. And. And I said, not for nothing, I'm not afraid of dogs, but I said. I'll leave it in your mailbox. Or you know, you gotta put a container down there. And he did. He put a container down and I started putting the container that I just need to. Put him at rest. So there is things that happen, but we can.
Yeah, the other problem with like wetlands is only sometimes you have so many blueprints. Electronics aren't perfect.
That's been a problem.
Exactly.
A lot of the prints I could file just over my phone won't answer.
Yeah. And that's a very good point.
I mean, you know, it's like she has them on her desk when we get here. We get them on the, on the laptops, you know. I know that I have a meeting on every other Tuesday, so I know that's there. Usually I'll know it being a special meeting. Sometimes I'll space, but for the most part, you're hot.
Problem is wrong here. We're doing everything else.
Yeah.
Right, and that's very true. I am now like that. I do want to. I can talk to Roche about it and see.
Maybe, maybe if he got Christie a separate phone just to send out a note for special meetings, a text. We should, she should have a separate, not that she's got a maintainer, but just to send it maybe a text out or something. I mean.
Even for special.
She should, yeah, she shouldn't be using her own personal phone. You know, or should she have to be responsible, you know, for responding on that all the time and taking calls on it or whatever. But just using specifically to, you know, there's a special meeting such and such, or there's this such and such. I mean, that's not such a bad idea. I don't, I know it's, it's another phone.
I get, I offer phones when you threaten them, I get pretty far your message.
You know. You know, something like we get notified when they close the schools because it's still, I get new Britons notice, I get Berlin's notice. You know, so I know before most everybody else that they're closing, you know? I mean, just check it out. Make it easy for you too.
Easy for us. Sometimes I get an email and I'm in go fifteen other things happen before I even get back to Berlin.
Sometimes you don't have a chance to do it, you know?
You're better looking at that.
Oh, I, yeah, absolutely.
I, I agree.
Don't you agree?
I'm, I'm always, because texts are so urgent.
Yes.
The fact is urgent, it's also a lot.
And it bounces in your, you know, you see that. You can't, I don't miss a text.
Plenty of people back all the time. It's just like, hey, you didn't read this thing? So, yeah.
Emails and chunked emails that you get. You sit there and to unsubscribe or to mark it as spam. It's like, I need a, a personal assistant just to do that. It's ridiculous.
Well, email, emails are ridiculous. I usually get like fifty, sixty, like every three hours.
Yes, disgusting. Which ones are in order, which ones not, you know? No, it's not that bad. Like in my state, one is.
Your IT guy, your assistant, the lady. Sorry, I don't remember the name.
Oh, they.
Over an hour each. I don't feel so cool.
I, I was complaining yesterday. I couldn't download something from meeting this morning, actually. Cause there's nothing to download. I'm like, Christie, it tells me the phone number I have to do. There's something there that I can't open. Well, that's an IT issue. Damn it, I'm not coming back in there for this.
Oh, I know. It, it, it's hard and, you know, Brian's very, very good, but he's good like with the server.
Yes, it took me an hour and a half last night.
And all that other stuff. Like I'll go to him, like, I'll go to him on a Zoom meeting and he's just like, oh my God. I understand. Alright, so we can do that.
Check out the.
I will. But then the next thing ends with, um, on H three on the top where it says. How council member, the county manager, the mayor, and now it's a question. At the end of the, they have public participation. So we want to change that to audience. And then under that, the session, I have a picture of how the third paragraph reads because. It admits a such meeting for. It, a minutes of such meeting, where, at executive session, blah, blah, blah. And then there's ten, now the minutes of such executive session, you can't take minutes in executive session. So it could be the minutes of, of such meeting, with this vote of all persons who are intended. And you can't vote in that.
I was gonna say, do we ever take a?
No, you're not allowed to, you can't even vote.
We report in the meeting who's going into executive.
Yes, so you already do that. But this says the minutes of such executive session.
We just cut the whole section.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, or I can try to.
Check the justice.
That's a little concerning, right? Um, and then this has been kind of a book for a lot of people. On page four, where you go on to public hearing and ordinances. And it's really the last two. Sentences. Under that, on the both of the debates, here's something to inter motion, this is a fourth in the body, unfiled passage. So I would rather just get rid of those two sentences. For the most part, you can. You know, during a bond ordinances, you can continue for the next meeting, and then on a regular one, if it's not a big deal, you can vote on it.
There was some rule, I don't know if it got changed with the charter of rule seven or something.
That's, that's be this little rule right here.
We used to have to waive that, to hold on to issue that, right?
Yeah, so what happened with that, that's totally true, Charlie, is that this was changed, say, may. All right, because originally it wasn't, you just said, shall continue. But attorney Fazi was cross at the teeth and got in his eyes, and if he wanted to pick up on Jordan that night, he wanted it to be waived, just to be. Like he was a stinker. But on, on other ordinances, like when you adopted, say, the ordinance on the lease bar or something. You could have taken it up that night and you never would have made rule five, rule seven, or rule five, rule seven. So yes, you totally write on that, all right, but. Um, that's why I think the last two sentences are confusing. Attorney Fazi now, so it may be whenever we expect to another bond, or he might not. Take it for you. You know, seven. But it's in here as far as you can take it up that night, we may. But he was stiffer, looking sure that it's. Are you okay with that?
We broke it on, eh?
Okay, and then in the minutes. I'm gonna suggest that first paragraph, the last sentence, the minutes will be. Often changed for each meeting by the signature of the mayor, the mayor hasn't.
I was just gonna say, I don't think he's ever signed.
Didn't change that at the.
Well, I would just eliminate it, but the, the minutes can be, you know, upon acceptance by the council. You know, so, but the mayor hasn't signed it for years.
Uh, pretty hard to argue with, you know, reporting, you might argue with the video.
I know, that was. Um, on number eleven, use the corporation council. Um, it should be on the second sentence, with the tempo of seven members. And then it has it here that years ago, if anybody wanted to ask the corporation council, they said to. An approval through the town manager. That's kind of awful by the wayside, but what I'm gonna add is that you're comfortable with that section of all requests for corporation council thing, based on the mayor, right? If I talk to Roche about it and try to come up with some kind of language on when people can meet up for corporation council. The reason with that was, it wasn't only because of the council, but it's also okay myself. You know, every time I talk to attorney DiNatio, it's a fox. So you don't want, you know, you don't want everybody to follow, to follow. Yes, and that's the other thing, you don't want five people following one. But if I, one of those, the camera. All right, but that, I just, and again, you're gonna see this again before it goes any. And that's all I had, I don't know if you read it and you saw anything else, say, you worry.
No, I was before.
Yeah.
Nothing.
I have a question from the fellow counselors on the phone. Cause I'm a little teeter. But I think people should take the hat on your front. Especially police officers.
All right.
I remember calling the traffic for a kid.
Sure.
Say that my husband has to think about having a hat on.
And when I ran.
Kids at the table with the hat on, they can't.
No, you can't.
When I ran for the school board, roach you must wear a tie. Or be gentleman, must wear a tie. I don't want to go to the extreme, I mean, you know, clean and neat, fine, even a clean teacher. Take your hat off so I can see your eyes.
Yeah, yeah.
I was insulted by that.
I'm trying to think who.
They went to.
I mean, did, he looked a little, maybe he was working the weird shift or something. He, he almost looked.
Every day sobered him up from dragging.
What was he wearing? He had like a hoodie.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, who's this loser in a bear? What's this guy? And he was the, the union rep for the, and the other officer was all dressed in his uniform. I guess he's just an old buddy of his.
I understand what you're saying. It's not, you know, sometimes we just want these to be reminded a little bit, not to be so casual. We don't think about it. But it's not a bad thing.
Wasn't bad, but you know, you gotta come in and ask a group of people. For something. Everything you can to make them like.
It'll be presentable.
Yeah.
That's a big thing.
He told me that.
Probably didn't think of it, and I think, unless, unless he was working a light shift, and I don't know what shift he was on, I think he is on third shift. No, Mark was actually up there, I don't know.
Over the under cover.
Well, he almost looked like he was on.
I just came off saying much, I'm probably the most poorly dressed guy in the county, I come out of the ditch.
Yeah, that's I think, I don't think I've worn a tie for. At least. That's some of what I was.
When I started on the, I probably wore a jacket.
Oh, really?
I like to dress, you always dress nice. Although I have jeans on, so the winter, I'm wearing pants or jeans, I don't care what.
The last. I was just, I should do a PR process for a job, and. They were like, the, the people that worked for the company that I was talking to, underneath the people that were here, they were like, don't wear a tie. Like, they don't want to see you formal, they want to see you relaxed. Okay, like, I, I dress nice, but they're like, don't wear a tie.
In ten years, like, one of my sons, which I have a practice, the business just totally changed. He, he's been working for about eighty years. When we started, Super High were right here. Now, nobody, you know. Business casual.
There's one guy who used to wear a tie in our office all the time. What are you doing? Nobody does it anymore.
The culture's changed, and I'm not saying every year, I would dress.
No, you're right. No, but like, you're right, yeah, exactly, I have a little bit of.
So the idea is, if I may, I'll put these together, I'm gonna do them in a minute. And I'll make it pretty, I'll, I'll show what we have and everything. And then do you want to have another meeting, or do you want to take the minutes first and see if we should have another meeting?
Time of the changes that we've all talked about, additions, the changes, whatever we've done. And then bring it up, and if anybody else has any questions, you know, on our, on the colleagues, then we can tweak it, and that's it, right? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You guys are all busy, I mean, I think we went through it piece by piece, and I think, you know.
Can I have a?
A second.
Now. Nobody was here at all.